Damon, here. Kimberly, here. Diana, Jeff, Rob.
Here.
I'm also here. Please stand and join me for the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have a, um, it doesn't, oh yeah, does the meeting cover those three five?
Yes.
All right, then volunteer to motion say.
Sure.
All right.
The Mont Guardia is full district in partnership with community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging their students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilling members of society.
Thank you very much. To A, approval of the agenda.
Second.
All right, motion by Diana, second by Kimberly, any discussion? All the neighbors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, approval of the January 7th, 2019 regular minutes.
Second.
Motion by Diana, second by Jeff, any discussion? All the neighbors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, 3A, school news.
Hi Kenzie, how were final exams?
They went good.
They're over. Other good news that's going on in the land of the Vikings?
Yeah, so this is our second week of second semester. All the students have finally done adjusting and switching their schedules. And then the boys' basketball team just competed in their major challenge where they were the first seed and they won, so that was good for them. And then the girls' best basketball team was the sixth seed and unfortunately they lost their game. So that was a little bit of a bummer. But then today at school, we had a little bit of a malfunction with the portable. It was a very chilly day for all the students in there, so that was a bit frustrating. And then I did, I was able to talk to the student council about the time capsule and they were all in on it, they just wanted to know the kind of stuff.
Love it.
Because they were very for, oh, we want a picture of ourselves in there. Just like the kind of things we were looking for to put in there. And then lastly, the search unite group was able to meet with Arno to discuss a potential other assembly for the school.
Lot of great things happening over there, thank you. And yeah, you're right, this morning we just started off a little chilly there in the portable. We had to get some portable heaters in the portable. But now the situation's been rectified thankfully through the good work of Dave Reed and the rest of the team for being so responsive. Apologize my internet sound, so we might just have to punt here tonight. Thursday night's a special night too at the high school, it's the guarding against cancer night. Every year, the basketball team, both the boys and the girls, they have a special fundraiser to come back to cancer, it's the pink outfit. So if you want to check our district's Facebook page, we have t-shirts on sale that our students are selling. A Taste of Jazz, are you in, are you in band?
I'm in band.
Yeah, so are you part of Taste of Jazz?
I'm not a part of it, I'm just part of the normal some pound band.
Wonderful. Well, this is a special night to really raise some great money, good eats. Saturday night, I think, uh, 6:30?
Yep, 6:30.
Tickets are almost sold out, so please be sure to grab yours while you can. I want to thank a number of individuals who joined me on Saturday evening to go to Middleton High School. We went to observe the MLK Action Forum, Civil Action Forum. Powerful, powerful night. One of the things I kept on reminding myself as I sat in the audience was, we have so much in common as a school district as relates to the good work of the civil rights movement, namely the fact that we're both, our mission is education. Provides many opportunities for equity and access to education as possible. And our work still continues and I'm thankful to those individuals who not only produced the show, but then also attended the show. Great representation by our core Vikings. And then lastly, board members, I wanted to let you know that we have the Day of the Capitol. You may have received a mailing at your home for the Day of the Capitol that's happening on March 13th. We're inviting a number of staff members to join us and thank you to board members Heiss and Saylor, or Dale and yourself. So if you'd like to be a part of this, let me know, I'll be sure to get you, get you registered. And then lastly, one that we ended our song meeting with, but important for you to know about, the Mental Health and Wellness Community Coalition is hosting a check-in on our goals that we established last August. And we're going to do that on Tuesday night, February the 19th, over at the Driftless Historian. That night, we're going to get underway at 5:30 PM, a little different than our customary time of 5:15. Get underway at 5:30 and we'll vote about 7:00 PM. We have a number of panelists who are going to update the community as to where we are on goals. We'll break out into some small group discussions and then pepper in a little bit of pizza along the way, so you know it'll be a good night. All are welcome. Thank you, man, present.
All right, any other school news? All right, moving on to 3B, citizens' development.
Oh, thank you, friend.
All right, don't get signed up.
No, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. All right, then we're moving on to 4A, personnel transactions. Motion by Chris.
Second.
Diana, second by Jeff, any discussion?
Can I ask a quick clarification, if I may help?
Yes.
Because I haven't seen one before. We had a specific mention of sabbatical. What are the terms of a sabbatical art? Just because of the first name. You bet, you bet. It's outlined in our employee handbook that provides where people have worked with our district a certain number of years, I believe it's five years, they're eligible for a sabbatical up to one year, provided they come back and they work for our district for a designated period of time. And I'm going to look to Cynthia, is that a fair question to ask? Do you happen to recall what the amount of time is that they would accrue? I want to say it was an additional two years, but I might have a mistake.
And they guaranteed their old spot back?
Yes. Here's the terms are.
Yeah, so the individual in question here tonight is asking for second semester of next year, so it'll be 1920.
No, it's got to be the first time I see it, did you want?
Oh, thank you goodness gracious. We have some sad news, but some good news for one individual in the room. Ryan, can you tell us about that very special person?
Yeah, today I get, I'm really honored to be able to share the retirement of Kathy Boyce. She has really been serving our district for 26 years. She was eight years she served on the PTO, and then 18 years as teaching as a speech and language pathologist. Some of the great things that different evaluators have said about her throughout the years is that she values students' thoughts and ideas, she's positive and complimentary, she leads through example, fun, and motivation. She's established effective ways of communicating expectations verbally and non-verbally, and always incorporating different activities to motivate her. She's been, it has been, for the last two years, she has been just somebody who holds our student services team together, who's always part of many activities, both in the classroom, at the intermediate center, but also through our speech and language groups. You'll see our every saw meeting, personality, many different activities throughout the whole district. She's really become valued. And you know, the other thing I will say is there's truly nobody who cares more about kids. And so we've been really lucky to have her as part of our district for so long and we'll drive the message.
I think I'll miss you guys more.
You can always compel the PTO again.
Always be helpful here. Thank you so much.
All right, so we have a motion by Diana, second by Jeff, any other discussion? All the neighbors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any, motion carries. All right, moving on to 5A, financials. Or consent agenda, certainly anybody wants to follow up.
I'll should there be a consent agenda that I can?
Kimberly, second by Diana, any discussion? All the neighbors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, goes past. Moving on to 6A, information advocacy report number one.
This is part one of three that we have this evening. As you might recall, board members, in the system of accountability we set up for our staff and administration, part of our strategic plan, we present these information advocacy reports. We're so thankful not only to have Sarah Straka here, but Christine Parme. Hi.
Hi.
How are you guys? Come on down.
Do you have the next question? So the first information advocacy report is going to be a share out of the opportunities for progress-based learning and advanced learning in the school. So who better to have than Christine Parme with us, our advanced learning coordinator, who really runs the show on this and juggles everything that happens within the school day to help with student learning and differentiate school learning. But then I talk about all the supplemental after-school activities, summer activities as well. So in order to get a good picture of what occurs throughout the year of the summer, we thought pictures of our kids would be the best way as we talked through the different programs that are offered. It's going on the first slide, set up by grade or by age. So we'll talk about some of the elementary dance learning opportunities for students and for students in our high school. So Christine wants to talk about some of these groups and the practice numbers that participate, what kinds of things, and if you want to ask questions as she goes, please go for it.
Okay, so starting with some of the programs that we have in the elementary school, we have a lot of math programming. The picture that you see in front of you is the Math 24 competition with the third graders. That third grade is the first year that they have a tournament, and so these are all the third graders that signed up to participate in the tournament last year. And it's just a really fun way to get them working with their math stats and competing with each other in just a fun and safe environment. And then as they get into fourth grade, it's a little bit more competitive as the top six students who, I guess the top six players in our tournament move on to the regional competitions. And that's the same then fourth grade through eighth grade. And so it's a nice meeting to introduce to our third graders and practice with them throughout the school year. We also have Noetic Learning, or Noetic Math, which is a math program that we have for students in the second through fifth grade. And that's 30 students per grade that we offer that opportunity to based on teacher recommendation and test scores. So we're looking to challenge some of our more advanced math students with some really good problem-solving and thinking skills. We also have some writing opportunities for our kids. So in fourth grade, our fourth graders get a chance to write haiku poetry and turn it in to the greater game from the Advanced Learners Network. And every year they get thousands of entries and they select about 40. So I would say they probably, I think they said last year they get, I want to see, 10,000 entries from all over, I, that might be a little bigger of a number, but thousands is at least, we're in the thousands and they select 40 students. Last year we had six students who were selected to have their poems published. Three of them are pictured and then another three couldn't make it that night, but we attended a award ceremony at school in April to celebrate that, so.
Very nice.
All right, and then Word Masters is something that we have in the intermediate center for third grade through fifth grade. And this is a vocabulary program that we work on. It's about 30 students per grade level, third, fourth, and fifth grade. That number varies a little bit. But again, this is selected by teachers who are looking for a way to provide awareness to those who need additional challenges in the classroom. We learn new vocabulary, we work out verbal reasoning skills, and they do analogies with the vocabulary that they learned. So it's a year-long program and they're on a new list and they have lots of challenges and it's a lot of fun to work with those kids. And then we also have science night, which is something that we just started. This will be our third year, so this is maybe even our fourth year actually now that I think about it. But students are able to sign up for any area of science that they're interested in and do a project and come and present it. And so you are all invited to attend this year, which will be in March, but it's just a really, really fun way to see all of the things that kids are interested in. They do not spend any time at school working on this project. This is all like student-driven, if they are interested, they sign up, they work on their projects, and it's amazing. So I, one of my favorite things to see them do because it's completely on their own, that they have that love of science and that love of learning. And then Camp Invention, I don't even know how many years we've had it, I would say at least, probably six years now. Camp Invention Program, I was in the summer, and it's a week-long science STEM program. And that, this is for students in, who are entering first through sixth grade and also are current fifth grade students. We have had, this is a very successful program, we've had over 100 campers almost every summer, and that number continues to grow. And beyond campers, we have volunteers, high school students, teachers, who come back and help every year. I think we counted over 1,000 volunteer hours last year alone just for the week of camp, because the community, the high school students, the middle school students that volunteer just love to be there and participate, and it's great with them to earn hours, but to be working with the kids in our community. And this year we do have the opportunity, we have a family who has made a donation towards our program that is going to help support 15, I believe, students to attend campus summer who wouldn't otherwise be able to attend. So possibly students who financially are not able to attend, and then girls who are super interested in STEM, so that we can encourage that, so, and also minorities. So that is a huge gift that they have given to our program, so we're excited to see how that works out. And then we have lots of programs for our middle school, we have the math team every year, just we have fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth grade math teams. This is a picture of our seventh and eighth graders last year, a program that gets started in the spring, and that'll be starting pretty soon here. This year we are hosting the math team again for the second year, and looking forward to that in April. And then Wiki has changed its name, but it is the Center for Advanced Academics, it used to be Wisconsin Center for Academically Talented Youth. It's the exact same program, it just now has a new location in, through the Milwaukee Public Schools. But this is an online reading program, so students who qualify are able to participate in classes led by online instructors from all over Wisconsin, and they're working with students from various areas. And so this was a group that we had last spring during reading or lit, literacy time literature class. Every day the students are working on this online class instead of going into their classroom, and so through times of reading to go to the math, they meet their classmates, they meet their instructor, and they can have camp activities, so. And then Page Your Problem Solvers is a really great growing program at our school this year, I could say. Right now in the middle school, we have about 70 kids who are participating in this. And I think when I came my first year, I had one team, and CPR had maybe two or three teams that he was working with, and the team is four students. And so now I have 70, and then Chris Keely at the high school has several as well. I'm not exactly sure how many he's working with this year, but the program has really grown. And it's a great way to teach our future leaders how to think through problems and think through situations. Again, there are no bright answers, and so the greatest thing about this is that every time they can say, what's the highest you can get? There is no answer for that, they just, they can always do more, think outside the box, be creative. And so it's just a really great problem, problem-solving process for our kids to go through that they can apply to life from here. Any, any problem that arises, they can kind of think through this problem-solving process that we learn. So the picture of our state competitors is from last year when we took this group of students to bring like Wisconsin, they all qualified for the state bowl. And then from the state bowl, we had a group of senior girls who took, I believe it was second place, and they were able to go to the international competition last year with Mr. Yar, so that was very exciting. So, yes. I don't know how you do it with all, with all the programs, and I ask you have to learn coordinate coordinating all the programs. But as you can see, this is probably maybe 50%, not even, of what you do on your cases, coordinating the students' needs in the classroom and all these kinds of things, so.
Right, these are the extras, like the extra programs besides what we're doing to work with students within the classroom.
Yeah.
So kudos to Christine Parme.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's any questions for Christine, or programming, or all these great programs we have for kids? Any summary field reading things?
Excellent, thank you.
So on to the second part of our advocacy report, looking at staff development, to the goal, to objective C, looking at professional development of staff. If you remember, I believe in August or September, Brian Johnson, I presented all the summer professional developments. So I provided a link within advocacy report of that to go back to that presentation. I just wanted to offer a couple of the main trainings that we kind of do in the time where time for staff came together. So whether it was the head running, the student training, that you see Courtney Parme there on the left participating in, that Casey who participated in, we have our Dan Leach that we had earlier in the top center, bottom middle, our Viking Voyage Week, three centers that we brought in to talk about Google and help staff incorporate Google Docs and Drive and Sheets and Slides. Or we have our crisis intervention training that Kim Van Lee offers. So it's just a reminder of some of those trainings that we have over the summer months. Then into the school year, nope, even more summer, sorry, even, we call them staff and CPR, or book running, and student messaging, and other like doing like heart training. So we do have staff presenting, our own staff presenting to our own staff, so, on these opportunities, which is nice to see that we can bring, we can have our own trainers offering support. And then we have our new teacher day as well, all of our new staff that came in, it's not for the same school year as well. It's a very, very busy summer, heading into a very busy school year, and looking at all the different types of curricular instructional program changes or recommendations that we have. The overhead is just a few of the things that we've been working on to give staff knowledge about new programs that they're implementing. And always trying to keep that balance of moving forward, creating positive change, but then balancing that time piece and that professional work need. We've been carrying that loud and clear and trying to pull back the throttle a little bit on making sure the staff have time during service time as well, and maybe space to get that classroom stuff done, but also being very aware that we do want to keep moving forward, making staff aware of new rule of standards, or people on, people on some of our initiatives. One of the initiatives we have on the next slide has to do with technology integration. So as, as you may know, especially those that attended our teacher leader meeting we had two weeks ago, where we had some fifth grade team representatives come and talk about technology integration in the classroom, and it's been a great success. We've had our fifth grade team just embracing our new interactive Chromebooks and how we use it with kids in the classroom. So you see a picture of our fifth grade team there having fun, with a picture I asked them to take for this presentation, as well as some of the other players on the left-hand side, Katie Earl, Jessica Billy, Jenny Rudolph, and Loukla as well, who have participated in our Chromebook trainings and how to integrate around in the classroom. I don't know if anyone had any ah-hahs, I think Danny were at that meeting, Rod were at that teacher leader meeting, we had Josh Meyerman and what's it, Javasi come in, you have any ah-hahs or?
Just that I wished that the two of them were talking to this whole work. It was pretty neat.
Yeah. That's on the docket.
And they were just really enthusiastic too about what they were doing.
Yeah, I think as we move forward with sixth grade implementation, we're going to be talking to you guys about that financial piece and how it'll fit within our current curriculum budget, that may be a time when we can have them come in and show, actually show some things.
I think it was the last one.
Yeah, yep. And then again, just some more, some more pictures of kids and that technology piece on the action. So on the left side, I have a fifth grade kid who's actually working on her Wiki, it's not Wiki, but her Wiki class. During some time, she's sitting in the hallway and I just asked her about it and asked her if I could take a picture of what she was doing, and she's like, I love Chromebooks, I have my own, doesn't get wrecked, it's so cool, all these kinds of things, which is pretty, pretty neat to hear. And then I just took a snapshot of what Mrs. Bear was doing on a large, on her mobile TV screen, she was casting from her back camera onto the screen so students could see what she was talking about, she was pulling over and taking the tasks that students were going to be taking. So just looking for ways to integrate technology to help students and teachers with their instruction. And that's what we continue to be a push-up, we move forward and integrate more technology to the classroom, we just don't want to give stuff, we don't offer teacher support on how to use the stuff. So really working hard to develop a cohort model. So fifth grade has been that first cohort, I've been calling them awesome beginning things, and they have been, they've just been, been running with this, trying things, trying things, trying things, you know, failing on something, but then trying something new again, and they just been going full in, which has allowed them, the sixth grade team and Paul, to, they're going to be coming over February 5th to talk to the fifth grade team, observe what's happening in the classroom, so they can sort of see the power of what the third grade team is doing, and then pass it on to the sixth grade team as they move forward with their integration next school year. Now that we have a four to five year plan with technology integration, we can plan earlier and start front-running that learning for the staff that's going to be receiving the Chromebooks in our school year. Other than that, the last piece is that professional learning communities piece that we've been sending groups of staff to, to start this journey three summers ago, sending participants to the PLC Institute, whether it was in Milwaukee, and the homes in Chicago, and then this past summer that was in Madison. In order to get all staff on board and part to speed with the legal and information, we decided to bring a super to us. So we have Dr. Lee's crews lined up for his first in-service day to talk about school culture, to talk about school leadership teams and professional learning, how that looks. So we're super excited to get one of the gurus in Kamal Bora to start us off on the right foot and sort of lay that even playing field for all staff to understand what professional learning communities are. So we're busy, continuously adjusting our throttle and listening to staff and making sure they're not too overwhelmed as we move forward. So it's been an adjustment period, but we know we, Kamal deserves the best, and we want to keep moving forward on services that we have.
One of the things I really appreciate about what you have been doing is providing the staff buy-in into the professional development, a healthy balance between what we'd be directed professional development, but then also opportunities for people to self-select what they want to improve. The work isn't just limited to what you do with Viking Voyage Week, but several opportunities through early release time. And it's not lost on any of us that we should note that we're very grateful to our community to allow us to have that time. We know that that poses a hardship for families and trying to get little ones covered and these sorts of things, so it's worth noting that we're trying to use that time as productively as possible as a gift, we're very grateful for that.
Is there any questions?
One question about the PLC is, just I'm curious, this is on the radar in regard, a very narrow, I guess, view as, in my house, you know, as a parent, and I'm curious to your Kenzie's perspective on this, but especially as the kids move through middle school and high school. More information about differences between teachers in the same curricular area or grade level surface? You know, one foreign language teacher only speaking the foreign language versus one speaking English, or one math teacher allowing the use of notebook cards on tests and another teacher not, that kind of thing? Is, is that ever a topic of discussion in the PLCs? Is that part of the curriculum review process, or is that?
Good question. The first barrier that we need to overcome, we got overcoming is, is finding that time for team to come together and talk about it. So whether it's the early release days or certain ones in a month where teams can come together and talk about some of those things, but where we are starting this process is the essential learning outcomes. What are the seven to 10 main things we want, algebra A, just so it's a lead algebra A with it, or algebra one, or Spanish one, or French four, that staffings come together on those things, and then build off of that, whether it's instructional practice like we're talking about, whether it's assessments, we get back into the common assessments. And we've, some buildings were closer to that in previous years, but through change in leadership, change in staffing, we've gotten away from common assessments. we've gotten away from common assessments, but getting back to that is one of our next phases. But I think that collaborative piece, making sure that that time is, aside is very important. People are not breaking silos because we're talking about a societal effect.
And the more people out there, the easier it is to get stuck in their silo.
Correct, correct. And sometimes being in a silo is comforting, sometimes for some it's not. Some people like to work in teams and some people like to work as individuals. So finding that balance that people still have that autonomy as teachers, but then also know that we want a same experience, a very common experience for students, whether they have a teacher day or a senior content area. So that's where having a guru like Dr. Cruz come in and talk about it in very plain English with examples from across the nation with humor to get the students involved or to get staff involved and understand what this really means. And when staff walk away from it, just as we all walked away from it, we intended to trust this group like, oh duh, that makes sense, right? So we want to have that positive effect on some things like, that just makes sense. Why don't we do that? And then you can start having those conversations. But again, goes back to that professional development piece, you don't know what you don't know. And sometimes you have to be forced to think certain ways moving forward.
And actually, if it's done well, it actually creates efficiencies for teachers so they're not asking, oh well. They've got a lot on their plates and this is just one more tool to help them be even better at what they do. What about Kenzie, to Mr. Biscatelli's question, do you see, I know it's in its infancy, but do you see professional learning communities development?
Just kind of his examples, like he said, like with the Spanish teacher, I definitely have experienced stuff through like my middle school and high school things that like my friends and I have personally either found like an advantage to or personally frustrating because depending on what teacher you get, like the good or the bad. I know personally, a lot of high school students will switch out of the bad to get into the good. So like the teacher that they personally find like did the best. Like I know there's one high school teacher that will spot check tests, like so you're not typically turning it in, like that you'll have like a full opportunity to like try and fix your small errors. Where there's other high school like math teachers that like one and done, like, like once you're done with your test, you turn it in. I grade it for that score. So I definitely see the things throughout, but yeah.
Yeah, the goal of mastery versus just getting the score, right? Yeah, very thoughtful. And very thoughtful of you too. Thank you so much. Other questions for?
Well, you know where to find me in the next couple of days. We have lots of discussions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Hey there.
Back again. So the next is rounding out to this portion of the information advocacy report. Pardon me.
I'm stapled.
So I think it's helpful just to ground the conversation and going back to the survey that we had when we were formulating the strategic plan. The top priority that our community suggested is that we are making sure we are recruiting and retaining high quality staff. And so that's what makes this next portion so important as we're crunching the numbers through the data that we have. So this is indicator five of objective C. It's important to spend a little time on what some of the assumptions and limitations that we have with our data. These might be given, but it's good to take a quick tour of them, if you will. As you know, as you're working with any type of data, there's data and then there's good data. And there's a very big difference, especially if you're doing comparables. So our assumption in looking at the data is one, that each district that's submitted data has been validating that data. And then most importantly too, is that these data sets, we've spent time norming it, but upfront with the goal is to have good results in the end. So we also have to have that assumption that the data set that's provided is within that same scope of responsibilities for that comparable. With that being said, we have some limitations. We, the data we'll talk about in the next slide, which districts were included in that. The analysis itself does include neighboring districts, but it doesn't include all neighboring districts. So these are districts in Dade County. You know, it's not the Better Conference. It is specific to the districts that participated and really we have to rely on those districts to participate. This other data doesn't include any co-curricular pay or stipends. So that might be something that shows up on that employee's paycheck as their total take-home pay, but not necessarily in that base amount. I'll touch on this a little bit at the end. There's the idea of total compensation package. And that is so important as you're assessing compensation. You don't want to leave out those benefits that truly have a dollar value and very, very valuable and helps us to attract and retain, for example, health insurance. And then most importantly, that the comparison is not taken into consideration the size of the district. So we're looking at, for example, a Verona, very different in the revenue limits capacity of the district. So the districts that participated, the ones that we talked about in Dade County. When number crunching, we looked at three column dimensions. And not only are you looking at the beginning as a comparison, but you also want to take a look at down the road too as you want to retain these employees. So what does it look like for the median as well as what the maximum on is? So we took our data, compared it, compared it to the average of these districts. And this is where I hit a reference in my note. So as many employees know that are in our support staff role and they work a certain number of hours per week and we can break that all down. But the annual stipend is a key component when we go back to talking about that total compensation package. The annual stipend itself, for example, an employee that works 25 hours a week would receive a $1,000 stipend. When you start breaking that number down about how that looks like on their paycheck, you take out first taxes first to make sure that's satisfied and that comes to $923.50. And then if we took that number and we took it and broke it down even further into what it would look like at an hourly rate, it actually comes down to about an additional 97 cents per hour. So as you can see, going back to that point of that total compensation, the numbers are just that base. There's also benefits like the annual segment to include in the analysis. Longevity schedule, we value our employees that stay with us and that are loyal to the Verona area school district. So there's a longevity schedule that has been established and that is also another factor to consider. So if an employee hits a certain milestone, one year, five year, 10 year, for example, then they get an additional amount added to their hourly rate. And then lastly, our health insurance. We have a phenomenal health insurance. We are very, very fortunate to have that as a benefit. It's a point of service plan, so you get choice, which if you're seeing a specialist, that is so crucial to have. The premiums are extremely low and at first access to UW Health. So low deductible, again, all those factors that someone who is comparing a district to a district, our health insurance is phenomenal compared to other districts. I think what's most telling is when I get to visit with substitutes and particularly the subs that work in different districts, neighboring districts, our district, and to hear the stories that they share. Mauree, we have a wonderful here, great students, very supportive staff and administration and board. And I think it's even more telling when we have substitutes new to our district that are retired teachers, for example, Abby Madison, and they sneak us out to be a sub in our district. Any questions?
I have just a two-part question. One, I think it's on page two or I'd like to comment. I think it's really clear. It's in the compensation summary report, but it says, "A recommended compensation strategy is to stay in the middle of the comparable data set," which I'm not sure where, where there, but I do want to talk about kind of the goal. The median is a, is a helpful number. Does the, do the districts that you mentioned, do they do any benchmark comparisons? Like, you know, a teacher with 20 years' experience in masters, what would that person make home? Or a teacher starting out with only a bachelor's? So that the age and experience of the employees could make a huge difference in the average? I don't know where we fall. I'd look at that data or be a more veteran district or be new or something in between. I'm just curious if that was provided and we get a sense for, would that change our numbers though?
Excellent point because there are lots of variables that can make sense as to why one pay is different than another pay. And part of the ownership or control show is including that data set. So we collect the median because that might be a factor as well as local years of experience and just years of experience in general. So data's starting to be collected. We're really kind of in that infancy stage, but there, and we see that being a very valuable comparison too.
I think to your question about how school districts vary in its age, its scattergram, so to speak, if you were to plot each individual out on our salary schedule and you'd identify how many people have how many years and where they sit. Our scattergram is primarily bottom right and that's because when people come to Mauree, they stay in Mauree. This is a district that people don't typically.
And if our, if our median salary of 54,000 and our median years of experience was 25 and someone else had a median salary of 54,000, but their median years of experience was 10 or 12, that would be very telling statistics. I'm just curious where we're at.
Question for you. In your exit interviews, do you track salaries, their satisfaction behind the people maybe leaving the superdrive salary?
In fact, we even ask a specific question, now that if you are receiving a different pay amount, what is that amount? So we, we let all ask them. I think now that we have some more of this data, we can call back on actual numbers and really get to see what that looks like.
I think one of the things we're eager to see is what happens with the Fianium budget, where there's adjustments that can be made without recommending a change to the middle rate. You know, many school districts have gone ahead to an operational referendum for the sole purpose of increasing wages for their employees. And so that I think is an outlier when you look at the 10 school districts.
10.
10 total. And then the advisories you saw in a number of those changes just based upon the number of districts that might have contracted services, for example, bus drivers or school nutrition and the like. But I think a really great first report. And I'm eager to see where we continue to make inroads. Nicely done, as usual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Six D, Community Legislative Engagement, meaning update, we're very, we're driven commission for school funding. I don't know, you guys want to tell the act to follow there?
It's very information.
No pressure.
No pressure.
For the best.
Not so.
Oh boy, thank you very much for letting us do some standing agenda items for you from the Community Legislative Engagement Committee. Between having a governor at the table and starting this new budget cycle, there really is a palpable energy over there as we've started by committee. And we're excited to start sharing our information with you this evening. So tonight's presentation was crafted by three individuals. In case you haven't heard the Shaw testament before, I just wanted to highlight her on the onset. She's actually our community member on the committee. She's an extraordinarily intelligent woman. She serves on the Dade County Department of Human Services and is often one of our go-to people on that committee for just updating information. And of course, thank you to Mr. Hayes for co-presenting with me this evening. Some of you are more longer-standing board members. You may recall that these legislative type of updates used to be handled quite regularly by Mr. John Humphreys. So this is sort of in the spirit of that and what we're starting tonight with a look at the Blue Ribbon Commission on the school funding. So part one, I will hand to that. I'm going to go over the commission's background and formation for you so you can see how we got from point A to point B. And then Mr. Hayes will go ahead and give the commission's specific recommendations that are pertinent to the school district. So on the screen, you have a quote from Assembly Speaker Ruffin Boss. He established the Blue Ribbon Commission alongside Senator Scott Fitzgerald. And this was a very long comparative study and one that they had hoped to do for some time, but they did list some tipping points as to why they went on this formal process. And a lot of those factors are ones that we can talk about right here at the board table. And that includes half of our districts now facing declining enrollment. We have over two dozen political aides to offset the complexities of our day-to-day school operations. Our equalized values vary, causing differences in property taxes from town to town, which makes people very fired up. We have a controversial levy system still in place. And of course, now you'll see a lot of coverage that we have a record-breaking number of school representatives on our ballot. So all of that combined is really what charged these two individuals to start this committee. And most importantly, I think in the foundation of this committee was that our public school funding still accounts for one-third of our general operating budget in the state. And it's actually still a top tax expenditure for us. And yet we don't have a sustainable or predictable model for fulfilling our school funding needs. So in the summer of 2017, that is when this committee came together and they were charged with committing two recommendations on this 2019 to 2021 budget cycle, which we're at right now. It was a bipartisan committee. Sixteen members were on it. You'll see some familiar names up there if you can read the font. Sami Pope served on this. Aspen, Dan Vassmuller from Wasbee. Olson remains the 2019 chair. He is the 2019 chair of the Senate's Education Committee and has held that role for some time. And then Kitchens was also the co-chair of this. He remains the 2019 vice chair of the Assembly's Education Committee. One of their top tasks before making the recommendations was doing public carers around the state. This was a well-publicized state tour. Those were the towns they went to. But before they left, they started writing the Capitol building in December of 2017. And it was important for them, before they went on their tour, to get testimonials from who they considered really the two foundational entities. And that would be the Department of Public Instruction, as well as the Legislative District Bureau. That bureau being a bipartisan commission as well. And on that tour, the commission used carriers to collect testimonials and feed that. And they did so from who you may expect, school districts and CISA agencies, organized public school alliances and also members of the general public. And then they went back in Madison in the summer before they started writing their recommendations to give more last information. Mr. Hayes, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Thanks Kimberly. And I think we all owe Kimberly a debt of gratitude for putting this presentation together and for really being the driver behind what will be regular updates to the board on these really important issues. So as, as Kimberly said, the commission report that they issued recently makes recommendations to the state legislature about how to handle 19 school-related finance issues. And they're outlining in, in two papers, they're actually really interesting to read. One was the first paper that they issued, sort of broadly sketched the issues. And then the second is the paper that made the final recommendations that outlined the recommendations. We're going to go through eight of those 19 issues this evening. I will move quickly. I'm not going to read what. I'm not going to read what the commission recommended. You can do that. While you're doing that, I'll give you some background on that, that issue. We'll start with paper number 10, which had to do with per pupil adjustment and per pupil aid. The goal of providing additional resources, as the committee recommended through, through the per pupil adjustment, which is under the revenue limit, is to provide more funding predictability to school districts. Per pupil aid, as you probably know, is categorical aid, and it can vary from year to year, and has over the last several years. On the other hand, any change under the revenue limit, an adjustment like the per pupil adjustment, once it's made, it typically is not changed. So changing the per pupil adjustment under the revenue limit would, would, would cause more predictability in the school funding for districts across the state. And what would happen then, from a, from a GPR standpoint, from a funded funding standpoint, is those dollars would be used to backfill that adjustment under the revenue limit for each, for each district. Paper number 14 had to do with the school levy tax credit funding. You can see the, the recommendation there. The commission recommended, in spite of my best advice just a minute ago, I'm going to read this at any rate, to, to support increases in general school aid rather than through that, that levy credit. Why is that important? Well, as you know, one of the major goals of the general aid formula is to equalize the tax base. So those, those districts with lower property values receive higher, receive higher payments. So that's, it's all about equalization. The levy tax credit, while it's neutral in terms of equalization, obviously rewards districts with higher property values, because the levy credit is based on the percentage of that property value in all levies for school-related purposes over a three-year period. So one is based directly on property, well, they're both related to property, but one is inversely related to property, and one is directly related to property value. And so what, what the commission has said is, "We, we want to distribute that money directly through the general aid formula, because, because it, if, if the 940 million that was spent during the last budget on the levy credit had been taken through the general aid formula, 70% of school districts would have received, would have received more money, and only a third would, about a third would have received less." So we want to equalize between the 4.6 billion that's used in, that was spent through the general aid formula, and the 940 that was used through the, the tax levy credit, and get more money of that through the general aid formula, so it gets to districts. Number 15, revenue limited adjustment. This is pretty straightforward. You can see that, that the commission recommends that additional revenue level adjustments for all the purposes you see there be made. There are, it's sort of interesting, historically, the Energy Efficiency Adjustment ended in the 1719 budget, and there were some of these other adjustments that were actually in the budget in 2009, 2011, but were repealed before they could become effective. The parameters of these adjustments aren't known, so we don't know what their fiscal impact is. Now, two, two or three really important, really important ones. Paper number 17, Special Education Categorical Aid. Obviously, the, the recommendation is to, is to increase special education reimbursement from a range of between 30 to 60%. So that's 81 million to 531 million in the second year. So there would be an increase in the first year, but to get to the 30 to 60% proration rate, that's in the second year, at a, a GPR rate of 81 to 531 million. The other option, the other option is to create, is to modify what kind of appropriation is used for special education to a, to a subsufficient appropriation, and then target that, that appropriation based on a percentage. So it increased to 26% in the first year, and then to 36% by 2029. So we go up one year over, excuse me, 1% over 10, and that would, that would cost, it looks like about 15 million a year. So that's special education categorical aids. Paper number 22, Gifted Talented Students. The commission recommends, again, increasing grants from one of three options, either 500,000, a million, or 2.5, I think it's 2.5 million, in each of the two years of the biennial. Paper number 23, Mental Health. This is one that is really important to all of us. There are two options identified by the commission, and they prefer the second of the two. Just by way of background, of course, this has been grant-based. To date, there was three, and about a quarter million dollars appropriated for grants in 2018 and 19. There were 141 applicants on behalf of 182 school districts and charter schools. Those requests totaled $8 million. So that's very important. That $8 million number is important, but only 64 grants were awarded ranging from 11,000 to, excuse, yeah, 11,000 to 75, 75,000. So option one is to provide funding of an additional $5 million in each year of the biennial. So it would be a total of $10 million over the two years, which would fully fund what they couldn't fund in 1819. So we'd get to a total of, of the over $8 million in each of those, in each of those two years. The option two, which is preferred, which is to create a new categorical aid with payments calculated similar to the per pupil aid, which is on a three-year basis, and then fund payments per student of $25 in the first year, $50 in the second year, over the next, over the next biennial, and that would cost 21 million in the first year and 42 in the second. Paper number 25, Early Childhood. This has to do essentially to how these, how these kids are counted. We're going to, there's a recommendation to supplement head start by a million dollars. That would get us to about 7.5 billion. The federal portion of that is 116 million. And then modify the age at which kids can be enrolled in 4K. And finally, paper number 28, Educated Workforce Shortage. There are two options. One related to creating a teacher loan forgiveness program, and the second that makes, that undoes something that the legislature did in 2013, which was inhibitory to Wisconsin retirement system units being rehired by school districts. So, and, and this, this proposal by the commission would undo those changes, and, and secondly, would create a teacher loan forgiveness program that would enable students studying for teacher licensure to receive loans of up to 30,000 over the course of their education. And then if they taught in an area where there was a shortage of teachers in rural and urban areas, those loans would be forgiven at a rate of 25% per year that they, that they taught. So those are the eight papers that we, that we picked out for you, and very, really, really interesting issues. And, you know, it's one of the most interesting things about being involved with the committee and, and trying to get our arms around some of these commission recommendations is just the intricacy of the school aid formula, and, and the moving parts and pieces, the revenue limit. I mean, it's just fascinating, fascinating, complicated, complicated stuff, but very, very interesting.
So what we're hearing from Mr. Hayes is if the commission does regulate that, how much we will get, it's yet to be determined, but I was also very pleased to see an attention to funding on student equity. And regardless of where you live, if you're in a Lake district, if you're in Mount Ork, there needs to be some work done to equalize those numbers. Lastly, the committee did want to leave you with a call to action, so that you can stay involved. You probably know that tomorrow's governor, Governor Evers' first State of the State address delivered at prime time, and I'm sure that we'll certainly hear some indications about his budget and perhaps how he intends to fund the budget. Probably early February is when he'll have his budget sent to the legislature. That's the time when, of course, he wants to start writing your elected officials, but not only the elected officials, but also the joint committee on finance. Those would be the folks that are actually going to craft the budget then, to give to Mr. Evers to sign. Just to note that our own Senator Erbikop actually is on the committee as well. Then, if you happen to be going to Milwaukee this week, the last blue card for you is Friday morning at 9:15. Largely, this information will all be repeated again for you at 9:15 on Friday, if you need to hear it one more time, and ask a panel of experts to help you with some of your questions. But we can try to answer any for you now, if you have any. And thanks again for listening to this.
Thanks for putting it together.
Well, I can just comment, based on my experience, I mean, I think that one of the reasons why the work that Kimberly's doing is important in particular is for us to really stay ahead of these issues. To really get our arms around these issues, which ones are important to us, which ones would be the most impactful to us, and then begin, begin making the case for those issues. And it's not a case we'll have to make once. I mean, we'll obviously have to make it time after time after time through the process, but the earlier we start that, the better shape that we're going to be in.
The governor's going to speak on Friday morning at the WSB convention as well, and so you can livestream that. I'm just so thankful to the both of you for taking the bull by the horns. Did you get any, did they talk at all about the revenue for this? I mean, we keep hearing increase and additional, but, I mean, it's got to go through the legislature. Is it a Rob Peter, Pay Paul kind of thing? Or is there, they're just not talking about where the money will come from at all right now?
Largely not. However, I will say that both sides of the political aisle are firmly integrated that there needs to be some increases. So I do feel confident that we will see some. Whereas I've been comfortable, that's why. We don't know if we'll see a budget in late spring, if we'll see a budget in the fall. That, that's, you know, to be told. But this is a terrific start, and it's also something that when Governor Evers was the director of his last post, he had called for exactly this to happen. So I do think that we have a really good starting place.
And one of the interesting things about, about some, several of these things, those, in fact, the first couple that I mentioned, is sure there's a revenue impact, but, but a, a big piece of it is efficiency. So how, how can that money be, be spent by the state more efficiently? How that, how can that money get to districts and be spent by districts more, more efficiently? So, for example, if you take the 168 million dollars in GPR that, that was used in example by the commission in the general aid versus the tax levy credit, and you, and you run that 168 million through the general aid formula, and you have 70% of the districts receiving more money, just because of the way, the way the formula works, and then, then that it's not so much a revenue question as it is an efficiency question. But when you start talking about increasing categorical aids, I mean, I think that's a different, that's, your, your question is right on.
You're talking about two things right now. More borrowing for roads and transportation, and it seems to be something that even those who traditionally were opposed to borrowing for that purpose are willing to take a glance at. And then the other piece is, I'm worried that they're starting to eye on the school districts that are being successful in their operational referendums. Because what that's saying is, "School district, you've been so successful at what you've done, you've been able to go to your electorate and get that additional money when you needed it. Maybe you don't need it from the state as much anymore." And kind of reversing that, that trend. And so I'm curious to hear what we're going to hear this week when we're in, in Milwaukee, because that seems to be some of the percolating that's occurring around, around the region.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to 7A, Consider Board Resolution Regarding Special Education Categorical Aid Funding.
It's parlayed itself beautifully, hasn't it, Diana?
Yeah, some of the things that the community legislative, they talked about at length was the inequity in special education funding, that the cost incurred, the school districts are only reimbursed 26%, whereas schools who operate, private schools who operate through the voucher program receives 90% reimbursement on the cost incurred for special education. And so what we're looking for here is to kind of make things a little more equal, to say, you know, we can, we can make this better for all the kids in state Wisconsin, not just those participating voucher programs, but those who are in our public schools as well. So this is my attempt. I'll try and ownership if we have changes or edits. I see that Dr. Slaro took the whole, kind of a letter that I have on there, and...
When I put it in draft, it took away the letter, but we'll put it back then, I promise.
I'm just kidding. Wait, this doesn't look like it. So if anybody has any suggestions or corrections, feel free to, Kimberly.
I agree. I think it's great. And what I really appreciate very much is that you went right forward, said, "No, this is how much we need, we need more. It's not fair." Instead of saying, "We would like to see a little bit more." I really think that going all the way is the way to best serve our children. So thank you for the remarks.
The, the one thing that I would double-check, because it would actually help our argument, is what the rate is. The rate in the, the Blue Ribbon Commission documents was 24.5, not 26. But it's, it's fantastic.
So if anybody would like to make a motion to approve this, we can, and we can check that number, or we can see it again, or we could, motion to approve.
Certainly.
Motion by Kimberly, segmented by round. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? At the resolution.
Just preemptively, I think this is great. I think you need to do one of these things. Nice, nice work.
And on to the next one.
Ask more.
Actually, I was...
You can't go kidding me. Wow, so responsive.
Actually, for the second one, I had full intentions of coming up with a request to increase for mental health supports, but I think I bit off a little more than I could chew. And I kind of wanted to go back to community legislative with this, because I want to get everybody else's feel for the Blue Ribbon Commission and their idea about grants. I don't, I'm not a huge fan of funding it that way. I think it should be something that's part of categorical aid. I really want to make sure that everybody is on the same page with that before I actually throw that out there for everybody. I'm kind of thinking for it now, so I have some additional statistics to look at. But I have a, I have a framework. I just, I just kind of get the whole thing, and the whole is open. So you'll see this back.
You know, we were one of the school districts that applied for a grant, you may recall, to have additional social work support in the wake of the crises that we had here some months ago, and we were resigned, and told, "No, thank you."
And that's why I don't want it to be through grants, because I feel like it picks and chooses winners and losers, and I, I think this is important enough that it should be for regular funding.
We'll definitely, depending on the agenda, depending on the circumstances, we'll do a few. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to C, Consideration of Budgeted Chromebook Purchases.
So you may remember coming out of that last budget biennial, there were some dollars allocated for the purchase of additional technology, professional development, web access points, that would be just at the high school only, and would require matching dollars. What our team of leaders within the high school, as well as here at the district are proposing, we use those dollars to enhance our offering of Chromebooks at a ninth grade. Particularly at the English department, we're looking at all the English department, I shouldn't have said just ninth grade. And so we brought to you three bits for your consideration. We're recommending the purchase of the Chromebooks through a very familiar company. This is one that we've done before, Firefly. This would allow us not only the Chromebook itself, but then also the Google management software that goes on the Chromebook, so the teachers can help monitor student performance. And then we always like to get that enhanced warranty, and this one would be for 42 months, a couple months longer than the traditional 36.
Certainly.
With the motion, but just segmented by round. Any discussion?
And this is for the next year's ninth graders, or for this year's?
This would be for this year. You would purchase these. We've allocated... We've allocated dollars for this amount.
Okay, for this year.
And it's for four years, the state amounted. So every year we've allocated within our budget, thanks to you, additional dollars to purchase Chromebooks at the high school, this would actually.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, so the motion by Jess, seconded by Rod. All those in favor say aye. Those, motion carries. All right. Moving on to 8A, Citizens Comments. Go for it.
Steve Austin, Department of Education Association. I found that data on employee compensation fascinating. We have a long history of teachers and administrators working together to make this a good place to be an employee. And I hope that we can continue that. And I think it would be fascinating to look at the entire data set, not just the distilled part that we saw tonight. And perhaps we could do that at the personnel committee, where board members, teachers, and administrators could look over that entire data set together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens comments? All right, moving on to nine. There's our list of future agenda items. If anybody wants anything added, let us know. 10 is our schedule of next meetings.
Can I just quickly highlight one that I haven't talked about with the board, but just wanted to put it on your radar? March the 5th is going to be a very special night, I think, for this community. And the reason why I say that, that is the night in which the village, the chamber, the EDC, and the school district will be partnering in a joint meeting for the purpose of talking about strategic planning and how we leverage the plans and the goals that we've all established within our respective entities. And we're going to also break some bread that night, have a nice supper with one another. Planning for that is tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 over at the district office. All are welcome, of course, to attend. But if you don't mind, Tuesday night, March 5th, will be a special meeting, location to be determined.
Are we wrestle over, please, the meeting, or how do we?
It's all you, ma'am, right there.
Figure that out. All right. Moving on to 11, Close Session. Bear with me while I read both of these. Contemplate Close Session for Section 19.85, Form 1, Form 2, Form 3, Form 4, Form 5. The Wisconsin Statute for deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a close session. And contemplate a close session for Section Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Form 1, Form 2, Form 3, Form 4, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercised its responsibility. Second. By Jeff. Second by Diana. Two old folks. Danny, yes, Dana.
Yes.
Kimberly, yes. Diana, yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Rod.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. All right, we'll take five.